When I told it, it just said border services.
Right. It's almost break time.
Oh, and my new clock timing is worse than seven thirty.
Call meeting door. Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Prino.
Here.
Mr. Harney.
Here.
Mr. Thorin.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Nittit. Okay, we've got five trustees present. We have a board. We have a meeting. The governor has extended his executive order allowing remote attendance to the meetings. However, this evening, we do not have any trustees attending remotely. We do however have Ms. Detmer of ICCCI with us this evening remote. Welcome, Ms. Detmer. Can you hear us? Okay, we have a non-speaking role right now. We can hear you.
Sign language or something.
That's right. We learned with Mr. Harney, white travels faster than sound. Okay. Minutes. We have a motion for the minutes of September sixth, two thousand point two.
So move.
Harney, second Harney.
Move by Thorin, seconded by Harney, accept the minutes of September sixth, two thousand point two. Any corrections on minutes on September sixth? If not, roll call please. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
I'm sorry.
Hi.
Mr. Thorin.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Prino.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
I am firm in votes, no negative votes, a motion so carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the president's report, the only thing I've got this evening, I've already covered, that is the continuation of the gubernatorial proclamation of the executive order allowing remote attendance at the board meetings. This continues until, I believe, October fifteenth. Okay. That's it for the president's report, court's report. I have no report from that. Thank you, Tony. Planning and zoning.
No report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Detmer. The attorney's report, there is no report this evening. The engineer, please see the update that he provided earlier. Moving right on along, director of finance.
Have a request for a warrants in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-three cents.
Oh. Hoffman.
Second, Dattley.
Move by Hoffman, seconded by Dattley to approve the accounts payable September nineteenth, two thousand point two, in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Any additions, deletions, comments or questions on the warrants?
Seems like a pretty high number this month. Is there anything special that jumped out?
Uh, well, sixty thousand of the water bill.
Okay.
It's the, uh, this technical, every month is the open water bill, and then the other bill of another five thousand.
And a few culprits.
See them.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Okay, yep. Thank you.
Okay, in order for any questions regarding to warrants, roll call please. Mr. Thorin.
Hi.
Mr. Prino.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Live for any votes, no negative votes, a motion so carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else, Mr. Man?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, next item, comments from the public. Anybody sign the comments this evening? Okay, what's going with? Trustee report, roads and parks, Mr. Harney.
All right, last meeting, we received a resident request for parking stations at UOL, Crane Court. They're on the village right away. And then we concluded that, quote, before voting on the application, what is going to be needed. I will ask the bar, if she has any more information that can relate to us, why don't we stand with that?
Uh, just that the landscaper has been contacted, waiting to hear back from PM as well as the residents as to whether or not they want to expend the expenses to go forth with the project. That's all.
Okay. Engineer, attorney are available, but it's moving forward.
Okay.
Uh, the other item on the agenda. Get comfortable. Uh, in the past, the board agreed to a self-imposed September nineteenth deadline on how to proceed or not with refurbishing Sabatino Park equipment. So that's tonight. And now, let me give a short recap on how we got to this point in time, and I think the recap is necessary because it will reduce future questions of the what and why. About a year and a half ago, on routine Dundee Township Park District inspection of Sabatino Park, it was concluded that the service life of the equipment was definitely exceeded. It was deemed safe at that time, and we were unofficially put on notice that the park equipment could at any time be deemed unsafe. And if that were the case, that would lead to an immediate dismantling of all the equipment in the park. Since then, four meetings have been held. First meeting was with the park district. That was a review of the expired cost sharing agreement that we enjoyed with the park district for the last twenty years. There's no more cost sharing. We're on our own. The reason for that is the park district needs have changed. They don't need our fields for organized athletics anymore. Second meeting was with the park district again. They came over to Sabatino Park, and they very graciously, generously offered guidance towards playground equipment suppliers, grant advice. They pointed us to a cooperative government purchasing plan that would allow us to avoid having to go out to bid. The park district also agreed to continue the inspections as they have been doing, and they volunteered to continue with their spring revitalization of the ball field. So we owe the park district a lot of thanks. I appreciate all their assistance, and it was greatly appreciated. The third meeting we had was with Hitchcock Landscape Design. They have a playground division. They met with us at Sabatino Park. They had valuable suggestions about acquiring grants, the difficulty of getting an OSWID grant, they showed us the hidden cost of playground equipment, the new playground regs, et cetera. Do a thank you to them, and by the way, that was a pro bono meeting, so that was greatly appreciated. The fourth meeting was with a playground designer from Clay, Illinois. It was at this time meeting to see exactly what our budget, a hundred thousand dollars, would get in the way of playground equipment. Unfortunately, at that time, we also learned that for a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment, we'd need another forty thousand for the building costs of it and all that associated with that shipping, et cetera. During the following board meeting, the board looked into possibility of a referendum for a special earmarked tax for each sleepy house household, specifically for Sabatino Park, with the village attorney, who studied it extensively. And looking at a full page of legal notes and tax notes, et cetera, I'll simply conclude it would be extremely difficult to know if you undo. So that leaves us up to the four options that the board has in front of it this evening. Quickly review them. First one, reduce the expenditure. A realization that we just can't afford it. The second one, attempt a possible community bill. This was discussed in length at a previous board meeting. We were given a guideline, a booklet, on how to do a community bill, and we studied that at length at a board meeting. Another option, we turned and looked at Eugene and asked him if somewhere along the line of new funding would appear, if he would keep his eyes open for that. The fourth option was a gamble, a gamble that would simply wait until the park is deemed unsafe and take it from there. Get a little ahead of myself. I'd like to throw that one out the window. The last two and a half weeks, kids around the world came and inspected the equipment. We had hoped to donate the equipment to them with the agreement that they would dismantle it, that upon their inspection may decline our offer because of the condition of the decking. They said the decking was so far gone that it couldn't be refurbished. So I my opinion is, we don't have time to wait any longer. So that's where we're at. Time to move forward, and I appreciate any suggestions or opinions of what's been done so far.
I feel like we have to move forward with this. It's a focal point of the community. It's a very important part to the community. And I feel that we need to come up with a solution and support this. It's not going to get any cheaper, folks. I work in the HVAC industry, and this year alone, we've had five to six increases just this year. Usually, we have one or two. So the prices are going to continue to go up. So if we're worried about price, it's only going to get higher. So my opinion is that we should move forward and make something happen. Ed, I'd like to recap. If, so right now, we had planned a hundred thousand in the budget, right?
That's correct.
And, and based on the Burke company, we, can we do something for a hundred thousand, regardless of how big it would be, but can we do something for a hundred thousand?
The forty thousand came out. Whatever the equipment cost is, add forty percent of that.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah, we could reduce it some more. I gave a picture. Everybody should have a three D picture in front of them. I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but that is what a hundred thousand dollars would buy. That's negotiable. I think I can get a little more out of them. That's what it would buy. Constructed, for them to take it from start to finish, it would take, I think the quote that I put in the packet, their quote right now is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
So my question would be that if we looked at what this picture is and what this cost is, what if we were to say, again, just let's say this is the whole thing. What if we said this year, because we have somebody in the budget, we do seventy-five percent of it? And then the following budget year, we allocate a dollar amount, and we, we add on to it, we build on to it.
Yeah, that was suggested, but we're going to add additional costs. We're going to
Yeah.
Reoccurring costs, shipping costs.
Right.
Multiply that and that.
Right.
But yeah, that's a possibility. Now, that hundred thousand is proposed. It's a pretty basic set. As George mentioned earlier, you got some figures from down south communities. I think you were quoting two to three hundred thousand dollars. So this is a pretty I think it's a lot of equipment for a hundred thousand.
But there isn't any
You could have.
Yeah, there isn't anything to stop. I guess the point I'm, not the point I'm making, but I'm just thinking out loud. If we invest a hundred thousand dollars now, and it's, we invest a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, which puts this up, and then people say, gee, it looks kind of shabby. Our goal is to, over the years, to maybe add things.
Sure, true.
Even though we know there'd be additional costs in shipping and so forth. It's not, this isn't the end all be all, right?
No, no, no. We can always add.
I'm just thinking, you know, there might be something that comes up next year, let's say, where there's a community fundraiser, or whatever it may be, right?
Yeah, we can always add stuff like a little funding account, or John mentioned the service bill that's my use, but yeah, we could always add.
So we would have something that at least we could we could replace anything that's unsafe.
Right.
We would have something that would still be usable, that, that would be usable, and, and that we could potentially build on to it.
Yep.
And, let me, this drawing schematic that we have here, it's like a carbon copy. It's identical to the one that's at Lyons Park.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with all these around here because I'm taking my grandkids along, and I'm at Lyons Park twice a week. But I mean, this is almost a hundred percent identical to Lyons Park. But it says it's for five ages five and up. Am I correct?
Five to twelve.
Five to twelve, okay. Now, if you look at these slides right here, the small part right here, when we're at Lyons Park, that is utilized for mothers with, like, children that are two to, say, four years old, that are barely, you know, they're not allowed, they don't go in the bigger equipment.
Right.
So what Anthony was saying is a good part, but if we're saying it's for five to seven, then that piece of equipment right there, those four pieces, the little hut, the two slides, and the walking platform, that's really for two to four-year-olds. That's not for five. There's no five to seven-year-olds. My, my granddaughter is four, and she doesn't even play on that. She goes right to the bigger stuff. So if that's the case, do we really want that? Or do we want to, I mean, do we want to go with this? And that might lower the cost significantly, and then if you want to throw something else in, you throw in a zip line.
Yeah, yeah.
Because every park today, I mean, they opened a brand new one over there by Long Meadow, and they've got two new ones down by Geneva that I saw. I mean, there's one in Geneva right now, and the one in Randall Road over here on Randall back there, they just redid that park last year. You could probably get some costs on that, and they put two zip lines in. So there's a lot of newer ones there, but, but again, they're geared more towards the five and above age. Yes, there are some that are geared towards the babies, and they have to be. But if we're saying this is five to seven, let's keep it at five to seven, and let's not put like two to four.
Five to twelve.
For five to twelve, yeah, five to twelve. If it's five to twelve, let's keep it there, and if it's, I mean, I hate to say it, but we're, and you're right, we got a hundred thousand right now, and we don't have a lot of surplus in the budget. And the bottom line is, if we can X that out, and maybe at that point, maybe put something else, and I say, do that, and not squander it.
Yeah, yeah. The contract that I put for you to look at was just numbers, so to get an idea. Like, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. We can modify this.
Yeah, contracts never finalize.
Yeah, so this was just to show you what we could get.
And I agree. I mean, it, it looks great, and like I said, it looks just like a couple here in the area. And, but that one area, though, that's designed more for younger children, and I hate to disqualify them, but if we can add that at another point in time, or maybe put a separate area there like we have there now
Sure.
in Sabatino Park, bring that in like a year or two later.
Couple meetings ago, I asked the trustees if they're ever going by the park and you see families there, stop and talk to them. I talked to fourteen families there, and they brought up that point. They liked the separate, where the little kids.
Uh huh.
They do like that, and other recommendations that they had. And I was surprised at the awareness. There was awareness out there among the residents that decisions are going to have to be made, pleasant or not, you know, going forward, but I, I hear what you're saying, so.
And, you know, we've got it. It's in the funding right now, and let's not drag on it. We have to make a decision. When we make a decision, we have to come back next meeting with finalized pricing from this, and if you want some help with it, I'll, I'll
Yeah.
help you. I mean, I'll be glad to talk to them.
So right now, this proposal is at one twenty-seven, five forty-five?
Yeah, but there's a lot of other hidden costs that haven't been, that haven't been baked in yet.
Okay.
Wait, wait a minute. I'm sorry.
There's some other costs that haven't been baked in yet. It says does not include unloading material storage, site evacuate, excavation. We know that that's going to come out, the old equipment and all that, but it says taxes are included if required. The footings and stuff like that that are going to have to be put in, so labor.
There's no taxes. I called them on storage. That's in case they deliver, and we have a running event for three days. I've already talked to Cal. There won't be much cost.
There's no hidden cost?
Yeah. Yeah.
The reason I bring that up is, is if is if we have a hundred thousand in the budget, my guess is we can't spend a hundred and seventy thousand. Right?
You did the bad one.
Eugene, did you find that part of money?
We didn't get the audit back yet, but wait till next year. No, there's not twenty-seven thousand more.
Right.
So I
I know, I mean, I have a three-year-old grandson that does use the little stuff, but I, I don't and, and you know, when I initially started this part of the conversation, I said, yeah, we build on in the future.
Sure.
I, my, my thought would be to, to do what we can with the money we have that's inclusive of all ages, and then plan to potentially build on in the next budget year as opposed to eliminating, that's a bad word to use, but not doing a
Not doing all the way.
I could tell you, I meant, these, these parts probably a lot more than anybody else, and I could tell you that this piece right here, that big piece right there is used ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, and the smaller piece never used. I don't care how old they are.
So you're there, and you see three-year-olds, what are they doing?
Parents put them on those slides. Put them on the slide. They put them on the stuff that, it's safe.
My grandson, not mine, because I would never put my three-year-old on these slides.
That's why they go to gymnastics and all now. But yeah, that's, I mean
We all look at you.
We got it. We've got to draw a line. We, we got to draw a line somewhere.
Right.
And I say, draw the line, and let's get on with it.
The first part is all, I just relay what happened to my wife. I've got a six-year-old grandson and a two-year-old granddaughter, and the two-year-old granddaughter followed the six-year-old up onto the five to twelve thing, and it was out of reach of my wife, you know, and she was scrambling, you know, so if we don't have something for the smaller kids, it's a dangerous situation.
I understand that, but we can come back and do it again. I mean, I'm looking at it realistically. I mean, maybe.
And I am, but have everything for all the ages and then add on later.
Realistically, when we're talking about waiting until next year, it's waiting five years down, because next year is not going to get us twenty thousand or thirty thousand. Okay, you're, you're talking five years down the road. So if you don't do it all at once, this is going to be a project that's going to be stretched out over, you know, five, ten years.
Then you compromise. You tell them, get rid of those pieces right there that I pointed out, and ask them to incorporate something for smaller children into that. I'm sure they can do it.
Tell them I modify it.
Yeah, modify. But I can't see wasting the money and putting that in when it's going to get limited use. I mean, it will get some use. I will tell you that. But like I said, I, I, I'm at these playgrounds twice a week, for usually two hours at, at a time, and I, I can name every one of them in the area, and I can tell you who goes on what pieces and all that. It's, that's why I've got three grandchildren.
Well, that's why I gave you this, so we can.
Right. But you're right, that was going to come up even with myself, the hundred twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and almost thirty thousand versus a hundred. So if we can cut it back to right around the hundred thousand, if we go over by a thousand or two, okay, I'm sure we can live with that. But let's ask them to modify it, do it quickly, and then see what we can come up with.
You know, I also kind of put this in the same class of, you know, what we were talking about with the water main replacement system. You know, when I was talking about, let's just do a piecemeal, everyone said, no, let's just do a whole project. You know, so we're going to do a whole project for one type of project, but we're not going to do it for another type of project. No, so it's a little bit inconsistent there. You know, we're talking, we're talking forty thousand. Yeah, it's a lot of money, but it's something that's going to last us twenty, twenty-something years. And it's one of those things also that if, you know, if you build it, they will come. You know, maybe you're not seeing the small kids because of the time that you're showing up. Maybe, you know, but I've Maybe, you know, what I've also noticed with neighborhoods is that there's a. A life cycle. You know, when I moved into my. House in Chicago. Mine were the only kids there. Twenty years later, when we moved out, when my kids were all college age, it was filled with small kids. You know, and you know, what is the life stage right now that we're at in Sleepy Hollow? Um, we are at the point where the older folks are moving out and the younger families are starting to move in. Um, I'm seeing a lot more babies coming into the. The village all year again. Um. I I think we need to have something for them. You know, it's it's, yes, it's gonna be expensive. Um.
Well, the other thing we've got, looking at this. We're in the middle of September. We got a hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget. This is a hundred and thirty thousand. If we were to go. On the line with these people and say, we want this put in, is it gonna be this year or is it gonna be next year?
It would be installed in the spring.
It would be installed in the spring.
They would keep. Twenty twenty-two prices and they're anticipating.
So what I'm saying is we're gonna, we're gonna blend over into another budget. Come April thirty. Do we really think this is gonna be in the ground by April thirtieth?
No, no.
So maybe that gives us. An opportunity to find another thirty-five or forty K. During the winter. So that we can authorize this purchase and then say, we will have the. Construction install money on next year's budget.
I hate spending money if you don't have it. If you show me where it's coming from, then I can agree, but if you can't show me where it's coming from, I can't agree.
If you don't do that and you buy your pieces next year, those pieces are high.
I understand that, but fiscally, we wanna stay fiscally sound. And we don't have much of a surplus right now. And what I'm saying is, you know, let's not spend money if we don't have it. I'm sorry. That's that's just my take. And I'll stick with that.
I have two potential sources of revenue. The first.
I need to know what they are.
The first is that, um, we built the budget based on very conservative estimates that came from I M L. And as it turns out, the forecast were very low. And just kind of looking at their updated figures, it's. Total, you know, including M F D and stuff like that, it's probably into forty to fifty thousand dollars more that we're gonna be getting.
Yeah, but the other is too, we're burning through legal expenses like crazy. I mean, our end budget, what's that?
Still within budget.
Barely, but we're burning through legal and look at the amount that we're spending for public works. I mean, culverts and all that. I know we. We've got stuff out there with roads and water and sewer and all that, but you know my feelings on culverts and all that. If you're responsible, we were responsible. We had to do a driveway years ago. We paid for it. You know, and I know if it's you tampered with the swale or whatever. I mean, this is stuff we're getting into, but. Uh, I'm sorry, I just, I mean, if a resident's responsible for that, they're responsible. I don't like somebody coming in here saying, well, we did this, we did that. Really don't give a damn. Bottom line is if they're responsible for it, fiscally, it's the right thing to do. And I mean, that's just the way I learned in business. I'm sorry. But I mean, if we don't have the money to spend and we're gonna say, okay, we'll come up with it, I gotta know where it's coming from. Otherwise, I can't say yes.
Actually, I I forgot to mention it earlier. We basically just have another fifteen thousand dollars that came in this past week.
On what?
A, there was a traffic, a DUI traffic crash where they took out a. Um, fire hydrants, several stop signs and stuff like that. And so.
Was that the insurance?
So we invoiced. The driver of the car worked with the insurance company and we got every single penny.
But we paid eight grand or more for that hydrant and the other stuff, didn't we?
Yep, and we got it all back, but in under other circumstances. Um, that stuff wasn't being collected.
And he's right. When we did the budget, I M L forecast for L G D F was a hundred and thirty-two thousand or a hundred and thirty-two dollars per capita. If you look at your I M L magazine from last week, you will see that they have now changed that forecast to, I believe it's a hundred and fifty-five dollars per capita. So that's about twenty-three dollars per person increase, thirty-two hundred people. We will probably see about sixty thousand dollars worth. In revenue from the state.
Probably.
Well, and it could go down, it could go up. But uh, that's, um, we're working off of a suggestion or a forecast from the Illinois Minister. These guys have been doing it for. A hundred years. And they've been pretty good on, you know. Getting pretty close to the numbers.
I don't mind going ten percent plus or minus on a budget like that, but I mean. You you know, right now we're going forty percent over if that's the case and. I I just can't see realistically where the funding is until I see it in on paper and I know it comes.
That's what my ideal was. We can authorize the purchase of the equipment now. And delay the installation until next year.
But if we authorize it, then we're gonna have to issue a P O. And then we're gonna have to pay for it somehow, right? Okay, so where do we come up with that?
We've got the hundred thousand already in.
Yeah, but what about the other forty?
So, well, that's what I said, that goes into our next year's budget.
So the other. Funding source. Is the ARPA money. We have designated the ARPA money to go towards the water main replacement. However, they loosened what we can spend the money on. And forty thousand dollars for their, for a three million dollar, six million dollar water main project is a drop in the bucket. And I I think it would be well, money well spent to just real allocate the small portion. To getting the part that the.
Of the water money?
Huh?
You're gonna reallocate the.
The ARPA money.
Now, from day one, I'd be told that there were strict guidelines on that. You can't do that.
The guidelines. The the federal government changed the guidelines at the very end.
If you can, and I don't have a problem with that, but I wanna see the documentation before I sign off on it.
So, um, we already have two hundred and twenty in hand. Of that, and we have another two hundred and twenty that's supposed to be coming any day now. Uh, so all the municipalities have already received theirs. So, um, if any day was to be the original two hundred and twenty. So do we have cash? Yeah, we do have cash. It's just a matter of do we wanna spend it on a park.
And that would leave me under a comment. The residents have made it crystal clear to me. The priority they give our parks and open greenness, the spaces and that. We hear it time and time again. That's why residents move here. So this money has a priority. I'll also throw it out reluctantly because it would have to be paid back. I had an individual. Who will remain anonymous, an investor we call Angel Investors. That individual said. If it delays getting the park, getting a park in, they will. Loan the village forty grand at one percent if that helps them get over a home. And to pay it back when they can. Not forever, you know, a year.
Like I said, we're we're talking about monies too, and what frustrates me. No, but what frustrates me is we've had two referendums in the last four years, five years that failed miserably at the polls to raise taxes. What's that? Five? Okay, and they've all failed. And yet now, the village is asking for playground equipment. And we're willing to spend monies that we don't have. Realistically, we don't have. But we're willing to spend those monies for a playground because you said the residents are asking for. Well, what about when we ask the residents? You know, we need a tax. Everybody looks at a tax bill and says, my God, look at the taxes we pay. Well. Twenty percent of that tax bill, am I right? If that, go to the village and the rest goes to the county, to the district, to the schools and all that. I mean, that goes there. And you know, consumers or the residents aren't educated enough on their tax bill to realize that. But yet here we are saying that. The residents want a playground and I understand that. I'd like to get a replacement too. But feasibly, we gotta do it within our means. And that's all I'm saying. And and it frustrates me because I know we've had referendums and they failed miserably. And yet nobody wants taxes to be increased. But yet, here we are saying, oh, let's spend a hundred fifty thousand for a playground.
And that's a drop in the bucket.
Yes.
That is a very modest proposal for the project. I think it's how you define, do we have the money or not? That's, that's.
And some say we do have it, some say we don't have it.
I don't know. If you think we have it, I'll cross it in.
We are all frustrated with the limits that are put on us.
Yeah, I I can. Yeah, I respect everything you're saying, George, and I understand where you're coming from. And I'm not one to usually spend money I don't have either. But I think with the news that we've heard here tonight from Eugene. And with how we could make this work, I think it's a very feasible project. Um, and I would be for moving forward with it, to lock in the pricing.
I would too.
Not a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we move forward with playground, uh, equipment purchase.
How about the expenditure of?
The expenditure of funds for the playground, uh. Approximately. Approximately a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Second, Serena.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to. Authorize the. Rehabilitation of the playground equipment of Sabatino Park. With a total not to exceed of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
To replace, you said refurbish.
We have one replaced, okay. The motion is to replace the playground equipment at Sabatino Park with the. Not to exceed limit of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The second was by. Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
Um, I just looked up a couple of things. Um, this year, we're also supposed to be putting on the, uh, roof on the salt dome for another thirty thousand dollars. And, um, at the treasurer's meeting, um, I was discussing this with the Hampshire Treasurer. And they have a similar situation where, um, the cost of putting their dome on was so high. So they opted for was a canopy above the salt dome. So it has a metal superstructure and then it's like a tarp type system over it. So negating the thirty thousand dollar question and that canopy system was around ten thousand.
So we could say a hundred point on the budget there.
And then next year in the budget is for body cams. At the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars and then Will Sam is working on getting grants for that.
Yes, he is working on that.
And so there's another potential.
Did he get him? He has received word that he had, uh, has had inquiry back and forth, I believe. Sergeant Wilson, you may know, have you heard anything, you know? I know he's working on him and he said, there's no chance we will get something. He just doesn't know exactly how much.
Either that or they'll eliminate the body cam provision from the safety net.
Yeah, but that's like, they're trying to rescind it now, but that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, probably not.
But there are some other alternatives we could save some funds. All this all together. Okay, any further comments, questions, or discussion? There are being none. Roll call please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hurd.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
No, with what I know yet. When I get more information, wait, but no.
Four to one motion, so carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'd also like to, how much we set up? Um. By October nineteenth, I think we have a meeting October nineteenth, that will give us time to look at modifications. I can work with Eugene and George and. And. I sense there's a little left on the table to work with. So by October nineteen.
Seventeen.
I hope they have, uh-oh, or.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that being October seventeen. What you would call, I guess, a hardened contract. Okay, if everyone agrees with that. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. So give us a month and a half to lock in the price. I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Ed. Good job, Ed.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, finance, Mr. Hoffman.
So we, I got a couple of questions answered by Eugene prior to the meeting, so I'm looking there, but. Just looking at reviewing the expenses and we talked about ponds and some of the culverts and all that. You know, we talked about spending money and I know they said that was, some of that was ours or whatever, but it just seems like every month more and more that we're propping up. And if they do in the future, I think we just need to reach a point where if it's culvert. Somebody's gonna make a decision beforehand before to replace that. Is it the residents' responsibility or ours? And being that, you know. I've seen them replaced and done it and all that. I look at it as the residents' responsibility. And we as a village should not be absorbing that. I know there's been a couple of other things that we've absorbed that I don't agree with, but you know, the board, you know, voted otherwise, so. Uh, and just going over expenses, I've looked at that in, uh. Oh, J C I, is that the J C I I'm thinking about, the battery company? It was an expense for like almost nine hundred dollars. Just said J C I. That content controls?
Oh, that was, that's an annual maintenance of the fire panel.
Okay, the electronics division?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Okay, thank you, George. Uh, water and sewer, Mr. Nimitz is not with us this evening. His number four. Uh, place in public safety, Mr. Dattley.
Uh, we'll take up Halloween hours in new business. Um, I don't have anything. Sergeant Wilson, you have anything? Okay, thank you. Thank you to.
Thank you, Steve.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Uh, building environment, Mr. Thor.
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mark. Building and zoning, Mr. Prano.
No report, sir.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, uh, old business, we've got, uh, ordinance twenty twelve, uh, twenty twenty-two eleven. Regarding the registration of motor vehicles, we're gonna table that until the October third meeting. Uh, I believe that also covers the second item, the discussion of registration might be changes.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so that takes us to another old business. We move to new business. Uh, Halloween hours, Mr. Dattley, we were just there.
Yes. Um, I would like to make a motion that we make Halloween hours three to three P M to seven P M. Uh, that is what they were last year. Um, on Halloween.
One second. Okay, we've got a motion, uh, in a second to post the Halloween hours for twenty twenty twenty-two. At three P M to seven P M on October thirty-first. Okay, any other comments, questions, or discussion on that motion? If not, roll call please. Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hurd.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes and motions, no passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the next item is ordinance twenty twenty twelve, twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Ordinance regulating the red. Deputy. The Board of Trustees to act as the Board of Appeals for the Village's Board Building Code, Residential Code, and Property Maintenance Code. And to that, we have got ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve in your packet. I would like to make a quick amendment or modification to that. On item seven on page two. That first sentence should read. In order to hear a, hear and decide appeals of orders, decisions, or determinations. Made by the building office relative to the application and interpretation of this code. Comma, and we add, or other general building regulations contained in Title Seven. Comma, there shall be an as hereby created Board of Appeals consisting of members of the Village Board of Trustees. So that is what I'm adding to, uh, section seven. That small section quote. Or other general building regulations contained in Title Seven unquote. Okay, we have a motion to so approve ordinance. Number twenty, well, the twenty. Twenty-two dash twelve.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Designing the Board of Trustees Act with the Board of Appeals for the Village Building Code. Presidential Code and Property Maintenance Code. With the change that President Pickett has just mentioned.
Second.
Moved by Prano, second by Thor to. Offer or to accept. authorize to accept, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, designating the trustees as the Board of Appeals for the Village Building Code, Residential Code, and Property Maintenance Code. Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
May I just interject here, sir?
Yes, Ms. Dattler.
Uh, the explanation for the reason of doing the, uh, general regulations, it is my understanding that the potential request for this type of use of the Board of Trustees is driven by an issue with chapter four of the building, Title VII Building Regulations, which is not encompassed by the International Residential Code, the International Building Code, or the International Property Maintenance Code. And that's why the, uh, the change on that particular part of the ordinance.
Okay. Any other kinds of questions or discussion?
I understand in what, twenty years, we've never had to go to a deal store, is that correct?
Fifty, sixty years?
Okay.
Yeah, we're all celebrating our sixtieth anniversary, so. Here we go. Uh, no further comments, questions, or discussion, roll call please, Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattler.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Herney.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, any other old or new business to come before the board?
Yeah, Mr. President, real quick, I didn't know if I should have brought it up, undermined, I I sent you a note earlier, I mean, uh, in the other day too, about, uh, finance committee, our finance committee meeting was canceled for last week, because we don't have the audit yet. Right now, we're looking at probably scheduling it in October, but we'll know when Eugene and I talk today, uh, when we get the audit. But we have a request from a, uh, resident to be on the, uh, finance committee, and that resident is here tonight, uh, Jennifer McGuire, so I didn't know if we, uh, so I'd like to get that put on the, uh, the vote for next month, I mean, next meeting, if that's the case, or.
The gen item is, uh, the third of October?
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any other business to come before the board?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Dattler, seconded by Thor to adjourn, roll call please, Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Dattler.
Aye.
Mr. Herney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, motion so carries, we are adjourned, so you get seven thirty, another third of October. Thank you, very.